The clerk will call the roll.
Wagner.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Johnson, Kearls.
Present.
Reed.
Present.
Glover.
Present.
Marcusson.
Present.
Serko.
Present.
Brooks.
Here.
Taylor, Sharp.
Here.
James.
Seven ayes.
The clerk will call the special actions.
121060 honoring Victor Ross and Company Real Estate and celebrating 60 years in business for the, in the northeast area. Victor, Casio, and others are present to receive the special action.
Councilwoman Wagner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It is a great honor and privilege.
We want to wait till you, sorry.
Usually I'm pretty long-winded by the time I'm done, they probably make it. But I can wait.
Santa.
Yes, how are you? I think take pictures of you. Councilwoman Wagner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It is a pleasure, although somewhat of a bittersweet one, to recognize Ross and Vic in this way. You know, it's, I don't know where really to start. I guess I'll start in the northeast area where Ross was such a leader for that area in so many ways, and a businessman, leading in so many ways. For those who grew up in the area, they won't forget Casio's Corner, or the ice cream that they used to get there. In fact, every week in the northeast news, that sign would always be in their ad. And you got it, right? Oh, you got a picture of it. And so, in the northeast area, it was so important for me personally. When growing up in Gladstone, Victor Ross and Company was always known to me because I think on every street corner, on a commercial business note, there would be their sign. And I first got to know the family with Vic back when we were both at St. Andrews Church in Gladstone. And so, to then move later into the northeast area and get to know the rest of the family was such a great thing for me. But I'll skip the rest of the visit down memory lane, but I'll just say that Ross and Victor Ross and Company were so synonymous, such a great part of the northeast and the northland. And although they have been kind of absorbed, if you will, into Zimmer and Company, and so Vic isn't going anywhere anytime soon, he'll still be around and being a part of those communities. But I just want to thank you, Ross, for being a part of the northeast, of the northland, and just being, at least in some small way, a part of my life growing up, and being a part of my leadership in the northeast before coming here. And so, thank you for everything you've done. Enjoy retirement, although I'm not sure how you're going to handle that. So, good luck figuring that out. But thank you for what you have done, and what you will continue to do. Clarine, thank you for what you have done. Victor, you're going to keep moving along. There you go.
Sixty-three years.
Sixty-three. Fantastic.
For sixty years I was parred, now I'm retired.
Good luck with that retirement. And thank you for everything you've done, and I'm so glad we can recognize you this way. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And it is a great honor for me to stand in as the mayor today to give you this honor. Both of my son's great aunts served in your office for many years, so it is a hometown connection. Anybody that has any connection to northeast or Independence Avenue definitely knows that the work you did in the community, not only with your business, but making sure that the community kept moving forward. And that sometimes when no one else had any faith in northeast, you were always there. So, we all appreciate that and understand the work that you've done. So, it is a great honor and a joy for me to present this honor to you. All in favor of the...
Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jim, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to add my voice. Ross, we've been friends for so long, and working in Kansas City with you and your entire family. Victor, it's been a pleasure. Your contributions to the northeast are legend, but we've got to also emphasize that you were always there for the rest of Kansas City, too. And the manner in which you go about contributing to this city has just been superb for all your family. So, thank you.
Resolution is before the council. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Hearing none. The resolution is passed. We certainly would love a few words from you.
First of all, I want to thank the mayor and all the council members for this honor. My father is humbled by this experience, and he's always been one that has always been in the background. The limelight is not what he's about. But I want to thank you on behalf of my entire family for the support you've given us. And I can never remember a time we've come before this council with something that we were working towards that we didn't get accomplished. A lot of hard work by the council, and that goes without saying. One thing I would like to, on behalf of my dad, say is that while we accept this with great honor, there are other Ross Casios in this city that live in their neighborhoods and in their communities. And we would like to charge the council with going out and finding those people and presenting them with the same honors that you've bestowed on my dad today. It's people like that, in their communities and in their pockets of living, that make this city what it is today. And the more of those that you guys can get, the better off the city's going to be. With that, I thank you, and on behalf of my family, we thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Dick Davis.
End of an era, huh?
Always a pleasure.
So far.
How you doing?
Congratulations. Thank you so much for coming.
Hi, thanks for coming down.
You said sixty-three years. Sixty-three years.
Thanks for coming down.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I'm your daughter.
Oh, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
Brett Kearl.
Congratulations and thank you.
Give you a call and just to think more about it.
Good decision.
I serve you.
Oh, Jim.
Good to see you.
Congratulations. That was well deserved.
Thank you. Thanks so much for asking.
Thanks so much.
Thanks for showing up, Jim. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was a great idea.
Okay, good to see you.
Yes, sir.
Will the clerk call the communications?
130005, accepting and releasing various Eastman and Dees in Kansas City, Clay County, Missouri, and requesting that the city manager approve the acceptance and release.
Received and filed.
130006, accepting various Eastmans and Dees in Kansas City, Jackson County, Missouri, and requesting that the city manager approve the acceptance.
Received and filed.
130007, accepting various Eastman and Dees in Kansas City, Clay County, Missouri, and requesting the city manager approve the acceptance.
Received and filed.
130009, notice from the Plank Industrial Extension Authority of Kansas City, Missouri, to the mayor and council regarding the notice of intent to accept the redevelopment contract proposal submitted by 1102 Grand Boulevard, LOC for 1102 Grand Boulevard project in the downtown Lou P. I. area in the fourth council district.
Received and filed.
130023, accepting various Eastmans and Dees in Jackson County, Missouri, and directing the city clerk to record the acceptance.
Received and filed. Will the clerk proceed with the third reading of debate docket?
121043, calling an election on April 2nd, 2013, for the purpose of asking voters to remove all existing exemptions from the existing hotel motel convention tourism tax, except for the exemption of the United States government and its agencies under federal law, in order to provide additional funds for the promotional convention and tourism business for the city. Directing the city clerk to provide notice of the election, directing the city clerk to notify the Missouri Director of Revenue if a proposal is approved by the voters in menu section 68, 564 Code of Ordinances to eliminate the exemptions of previously exempt groups and recognizing any emergency. Finance Committee recommends do pass.
Councilwoman Marcusson.
Thank you. I move that the committee substitute for ordinance number 121043 be amended, so that it reads as in the document entitled Committee Substitute for Ordinance Number 121043 as amended, which has been distributed to all council members.
Second.
It has been moved in second that the committee substitute for ordinance number 121043 be amended. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Yes, this is a small amendment we talked about in business session, so it'll make clear to the voters in the ballot language that the money raised by eliminating the exemptions to the convention and tourism tax used for convention and entertainment facilities will only be used for city-owned facilities. It just includes the word "city-owned." And the title is also amended to mirror the specific language of the ballot language.
Is there any further discussion? The clerk will call the roll on the motion to amend.
Wagner.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Johnson. Kearls.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Glover.
Aye.
Marcusson.
Aye.
Serko.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Sharp.
Aye.
James.
The motion is passed. The ordinance as amended is now before the council. Is there any discussion on the ordinance as amended?
Yes, this is, we've talked about this in council and in finance committee and in business session today. This will allow the voters the opportunity to eliminate a discrepancy in these convention and tourism collections, to eliminate the exemption that has been in place only in Kansas City. So, it will level the playing field and eliminate an exemption for nonprofit groups that come to our city, use our facilities, and give them the opportunity to contribute to the maintenance of our convention, city-owned convention and entertainment facilities, the marketing of our beautiful city, and the Neighborhood and Tourism Development Fund that promotes neighborhoods across Kansas City to people in the metro area and from outside. So, it's a very important fund for the city to promote our beautiful area, and this will just eliminate an exemption that has only been collected, or not collected, in Kansas City. So, we will go on the ballot in April if we pass this.
Councilwoman Sharp.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. I just wanted to speak briefly to this issue as well. I think we all realize that this will provide additional funding for maintaining and modernizing our convention, our public convention and entertainment facilities, and will also provide additional money to promote Kansas City as a tourist and convention site. And every time someone comes here as a tourist or to attend a convention, of course, they all spend money here, and the longer they're here, the more they spend. And that's just money added to our economy that otherwise we wouldn't have. But I would like to speak just a little bit more about the neighborhood tourism aspect of it. You know, we have a citizens committee, the neighborhood, that deals with the Neighborhood Tourist Development Fund, much like our PIAAC committee. And these folks put in a lot of hours every year on trying to sort out what requests by our neighborhoods should be funded to bring in tourists to Kansas City and to our neighborhoods. But every year, there are so many more requests than they can possibly fund. And this will provide some more funding for that. So, all of our neighborhoods in Kansas City will have a better chance of being able to apply for and get these neighborhood tourism funds, so they can promote things in their neighborhood to bring people from outside Kansas City into their neighborhoods. And I just know out in South Kansas City, one of the things, it's not a big thing, but for South suburban junior football, now when they have their football tournaments that bring in teams from all around the metro area, and as you know, Madam Mayor, when kids are playing in sports, they tend to bring along the parents and grandparents and aunts and uncles, and they all spend a little money when they're here. So, this will be a great thing for all our neighborhoods. And it just puts us on a level playing field with all the other cities in the state. So, I do hope it passes unanimously today, and I hope the voters overwhelmingly approve it, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Marcusson.
Again, the exemption that it will remedy is that collected on bednights of visitors coming in from out of town using in our convention area. So, it is folks coming in who are in part of a nonprofit convention, and the Convention and Visitors Association has done a good job of reaching out to those convention promoters. And this is not the deciding factor. They come to Kansas City because it's a good place to have conventions. I think we've been very successful in the nonprofit market, and it is because, we do have a competitive price structure, but we also have a very friendly city. We have a safe city, we have a clean city, and it's the type of city that a lot of religious and nonprofit groups enjoy coming to. And our competitive advantage is our beautiful area and our friendly population. I think we heard that a lot during, especially when the NAACP came to town. That was just, all we heard about was, this is the friendliest place to do business. It's easy to get around, it's safe, we feel safe walking around. So, we have a lot of competitive advantages, and we have made sure that this doesn't take one away. It just will allow us to better market our facilities, better promote our neighborhoods, and make sure that our convention facilities are the level that we all expect. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, will the clerk call the roll on the ordinance as amended?
Wagner.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Johnson. Kearls.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Glover.
Aye.
Marcusson.
Aye.
Serko.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Sharp.
Aye.
James.
Seven ayes. Ayes, sorry.
The ordinance is passed.
Yeah, aye.
Will the clerk proceed with the advance consent docket? Councilwoman Marcusson.
Before I do that, I would like to...
The docket's so short, I...
I would like to request that the clerk receive docket and read a resolution prepared too late to be on today's docket.
The clerk will receive an ordinance, was it a resolution?
The priority, the resolution, yes.
The clerk will receive the resolution, assign a number, and read the title.
That resolution number is going to be 130025, adopting the city's strategic plan of council priorities and performance indicators.
I move for immediate adoption of this resolution.
It has been moved in second that the resolution be adopted. Is there any discussion? Councilwoman Marcusson.
This is really a milestone in Kansas City. We have set some lofty priorities for our city. The council met before we were ever sworn in and set some, did a strategy session, strategic priorities, a vision for the city. And we are now institutionalizing our priorities and aligning our priorities with performance measurements and our budget. And it's going to be a continuous cycle of setting priorities, measuring our success, or if we don't achieve some of our priorities, how can we realign them or provide the necessary resources to be successful. So, I think this is a very, very important step in Kansas City's governance in our effort to make Kansas City best. And I'm proud that this council has taken this step, and I'm very proud of the city manager's office, the personnel, Kate Bender, Julie Steenson, and Catherine Carter, for leading that, for the mayor's staff, and the city council all working together and deciding that this is the way that we do business in Kansas City. We're very deliberate about what we are, where we're going. We are telling our citizens to help us. We're listening to them to help us set our priorities. We're making sure we are doing what we say we're going to do, and we'll put the necessary resources behind those. So, I am very, very proud of our city. We're getting a lot of national attention for this, but that's not why we did it. We did it because it's a good way to govern. And I'm very proud that we are, hopefully, adopting this today in time to really be a part of our budget process. So, that's why it is kind of adopted by, on the floor. So, we're beginning our budget process right now. So, appreciate all the hard work that has gone into this.
Is there any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, will the clerk call the roll?
Wagner.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Johnson. Kearls.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Glover.
Aye.
Marcusson.
Aye.
Serko.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Sharp.
Aye.
James.
Seven ayes.
The resolution is passed. Councilwoman Marcusson.
Now, Honorable Mayor, I move that the charter requirement for reading of ordinances on three separate days be waived for the ordinances on today's docket listed as scheduled committee advances, and that these ordinances be advanced for final reading and consideration at this time.
Second.
It has been moved in second that the charter requirements for reading of ordinances on three separate days be waived, and that the ordinance on today's docket listed as scheduled committee advances be advanced for final reading and consideration at this time. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, will the clerk call the roll on the motion?
Wagner.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Johnson. Kearls.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Glover.
Aye.
Marcusson.
Aye.
Serko.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Sharp.
Aye.
James.
Seven ayes.
Will the clerk proceed with an advance consent docket?
121032, authorizing acceptance of $117,250 grant with the Missouri Department of Transportation. Estimate revenue in that amount, appropriating that amount to the shared roles safety education account in the capital improvements fund and designated requisitioned authority. Transportation Committee recommends do pass.
Will the clerk call the roll?
Wagner.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Johnson. Kearls.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Glover.
Aye.
Marcusson.
Aye.
Serko.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Sharp.
Aye.
James.
Seven ayes.
The ordinance is passed. Who is...
I can do it again.
Councilwoman...
Honorable Mayor, I move that the charter requirement for reading of ordinances on three separate days be waived for ordinances on today's docket listed as second readings.
Except for, wait a minute, we're doing, we skipped over, we needed to do...
We can do the base docket.
Okay.
Advance.
Okay.
Okay. 121033, increasing appropriations in the amount of $650,000 in the Healthy Homes and Lead Hazard Control Grant, account for the purpose of providing additional funding for needed and subs- recipient rewards through the Healthy Homes program and recognizing any emergency. Neighborhood Committee recommends do pass.
Councilwoman Kearls.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Neighborhoods and Healthy Communities Committee has reviewed this ordinance and recommends do pass. This is focusing mostly on our youth, six and under, who are affected by lead poisoning in our homes.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, will the clerk call the roll?
Wagner.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Johnson. Kearls.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Glover.
Aye.
Marcusson.
Aye.
Serko.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Sharp.
Aye.
James.
Seven ayes.
The ordinance is passed.
121062, authorizing acceptance of a $50,000 grant with the Healthcare Foundation of Greater Kansas City. Estimating revenue in that amount, appropriating it to the active living KC account in the capital improvements fund and designated requisitioned authority. Neighborhood Committee recommends do pass.
Councilwoman Kearls.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is mainly with the Hickman Mills School District. We were told that if there is additional funding, they might expand this. Neighborhoods and Healthy Communities has reviewed this ordinance and recommends do pass.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk call the roll?
Wagner.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Johnson. Kearls.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Glover.
Aye.
Marcusson.
Aye.
Serko.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Sharp.
Aye.
James.
Seven ayes.
The ordinance is passed.
121065, accepting approval of $57,000 contract amendment with the Kansas City Free Health Clinic to provide HIV testing and referral services in Kansas City area, and declaring any emergency. Neighborhood Committee recommends do pass.
Councilwoman Kearls.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This ordinance deals with several counties, not just Kansas City or Jackson County. And Neighborhoods and Healthy Communities has reviewed this ordinance and recommends do pass.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk call the roll?
Wagner.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Johnson. Kearls.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Glover.
Aye.
Marcusson.
Aye.
Serko.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Sharp.
Aye.
James.
Seven ayes.
The ordinance is passed.
121073, authorizing director of Neighborhood and Housing Services to amend and extend a contract with Tru Medical Center to provide mental health services to inmates participating in the Bridges Program. Neighborhood Committee recommends do pass.
Councilwoman Kearls.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Neighborhoods and Healthy Communities Committee reviewed this ordinance and recommends do pass.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk call the roll?
Wagner.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Johnson. Kearls.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Glover.
Aye.
Marcusson.
Aye.
Serko.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Sharp.
Aye.
James.
Seven ayes.
The ordinance is passed.
121048, rezoning an area of approximately 25 acres, located at 24024 Blue Ridge Boulevard, from District M1 through 5 to District 75 to District M35. Planning Zone, you Committee recommends do pass.
Councilwoman Ford.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, this ordinance rezones an area for the expansion of a junk salvage yard and general recycling service. Planning Zone Economic Development Committee has reviewed it and recommends do pass.
Councilwoman Wagner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. During the discussion of this particular ordinance, there were some questions, or questions that I asked pertaining to whether or not the applicant had reached out to Regulated Industries as they regulate the scrap metal recycling industry here in Kansas City. They had not at that point, and it was, I have to admit, as an editorial, it was somewhat disappointing that our staff did not ask the applicant to reach out to Regulated Industries. But as I had asked them to do so before coming here today, I just wanted to report that they have. I saw the applicant here in our audience today, Mr. Sneed, and I just want to express my appreciation, both to him and his attorney, that they did have a conversation with them. I think everyone is in agreement with what the business needs to do as it gets started and moving forward. So, I just wanted to say that that had been done and express my appreciation that it had been done. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And we're excited to have a business expanding in Kansas City. Thank you for your investment. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk call the roll?
Wagner.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Johnson. Kearls.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Glover.
Aye.
Marcusson.
Aye.
Serko.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Sharp. James.
The ordinance is passed. I'm sorry. The ordinance is passed.
021, I'm sorry, 121050, rezoning an area approximately 0.1 acres, located at 426 West Fifth Street, from District M35 to District M15. Planning Zone, you Committee recommends do pass.
Councilwoman Ford.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This allows for residential uses in an existing structure. Planning Zone Economic Development Committee has reviewed this ordinance, recommends do pass.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk call the roll?
Wagner.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Johnson. Kearls.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Glover.
Aye.
Marcusson.
Aye.
Serko.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Sharp.
Aye.
James.
Seven ayes.
The ordinance is passed.
121064, estimate revenue in amount of $29,726 in the Special Business District Fund, appropriating that amount in appropriated fund balance to the Union Hill Special District Fund and designated requisitioned authority. Planning Zone, you Committee recommends do pass.
Councilwoman Ford.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, this is one of two special business districts we have in the city in which we collect the revenues and turn it back over to the business district. Planning Zone Economic Development Committee has reviewed it, recommends do pass.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk call the roll?
Wagner.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Johnson. Kearls.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Glover.
Aye.
Marcusson.
Aye.
Serko.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Sharp.
Aye.
James.
Seven ayes.
The ordinance passes.
121063, authorizing condemnation, taking private property in fee simple for project number 89002672 in Swool Park Industrial Area Flood Damage Reduction Project, located within the area bounded by 75th Street Terrace on the north, 77th Street on the south, and Union Specific Railroad on the west, and Blue River Road on the east, all in Kansas City, Jackson County, Missouri, providing for payment of just compensation therefore, authorizing to continue negotiations and purchase by the Water Service Department, authorizing following of the petition for condemnation by the city attorney on behalf of the city, and directing the city clerk to record this ordinance in the Office of Recorder Deeds of Jackson County, Missouri. Transportation Committee recommends do pass.
Councilwoman Davis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This condemnation is to take the land in a railroad right of way. This is not owned by the railroad, it's owned by the adjoining property owners, the adjoining property owners that were there when this was first acquired, which means it'll be very difficult to find out who they are. So, we have to use condemnation as a means of acquiring it. To our knowledge, there's nobody that opposes the effort. Transportation and Infrastructure Committee recommends do pass.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, will the clerk call the roll?